of the Oakdale City Council for September 12, 2023. Sarah, will you take the role?
Yes, Councilmember Herr.
Here.
Councilmember Ingritson.
Here.
Councilmember Morecambe.
Here.
Councilmember Willenbring.
Here.
Mayor Zabel.
Here. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Councilmembers in front of us, we have an agenda. City Administrator Volkers, do we have an amended agenda since we moved that swearing in?
No, you're going to have to amend it on the fly tonight.
That's just fine. So councilmembers, we're going to strike the oath of office down below. We don't need to also change the corresponding consensus motion since that-
Mr. Mayor, City Council, I did, I passed out a new RCA, which we will upload, which has clarification that it is recommending approval of the new police officer subject to pre-employment screening, which is often how we do it when we bring it to you.
Got it. So councilmembers, we have those two items, that small correction to the consensus motion, as well as removing the oath of office tonight. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda as amended, removing those two?
I will make a motion to approve the agenda as amended by the mayor.
Also, I should clarify, but not, we're not removing those two, we're moving one, changing the other. I can see Chris out of the corner of my eye panicking. So there is a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, final comments. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and the amended agenda is adopted. In front of us tonight, we have three sets of minutes for approval. First up, workshop minutes, August 22, 2023. Councilmembers, any changes or corrections? I'll look for a motion.
They're moved.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, final comments. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and those minutes are approved. Next up, we have minutes from the regular meeting, August 22, 2023. Councilmembers, any changes or corrections? I'll look for a motion.
They're moved.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, final comments. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and those minutes are approved as well. Finally, we have a set of special workshop minutes from August 29, 2023. Any changes or corrections? I'll look for a motion.
They're moved.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, final comments. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and those minutes are approved as well. Whew, all right. We're going to move on to the public hearing section of the agenda. We have two tonight. First up, a public hearing on vacating an alley within Block 3, Forest Park Second Edition. Do we have a staff presentation?
Yes, we do.
Max, welcome. Take it away.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Give me just a moment to pull this up. So here we have a proposed vacation of an unbuilt alley, if I can get that up on the So this alley was never built and is located a few blocks east of Tanner's Lake between 7th Street, Grafton Avenue, 6th Street, and Goodwin Avenue. While this alley was originally platted in 1946, it was never built or used for access purposes. This issue was brought to our attention during a real estate transaction as a title company flagged the property due to the presence of a garage encroaching into the alley. We later took a look and found that during the review of the alley, there were multiple encroachments across several properties, leading staff to recommend vacating the alley in its entirety. Additionally, the vacation of the alley would bring all of the encroachments into compliance. In terms of precedent, the city has vacated unused alleys with apparent encroachments in the past, including in this neighborhood and other older parts of the city. As a result, city staff are recommending approval. As a reminder, state statutes require a public hearing to be held in order to vacate the alley. Additionally, this motion requires a four-fifths minimum vote from the city council. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Councilmembers, any questions for Max right out of the, right out of the gate? All righty. Well, at this time, we're going to go ahead and open the public hearing. This is an opportunity for anybody in the audience to step up to the podium, state your name and address. Speaking about this one item only, we'll have an opportunity during open forum to talk about anything else, but if anybody would like to speak about vacating this specific alley, please feel free to do so. I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back up for council consideration. Councilmembers, any questions or comments? Lively bunch tonight. I like it. I'll look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to waive reading and adopt resolution 2023-86, approving the vacation of an alley within Block 3, Forest Park Second Edition.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, final comments. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and that alley is vacated. Next up, we have an interim ordinance authorizing a study imposing a moratorium on the operation of cannabis businesses within the city of Oakdale. City Administrator Volkers.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, City Council. What's before you tonight is, let me give you a little bit of background. In effect of August 1, 2023, the state legislature approved legalized possession of cannabis. With that, there will be a licensure process through the state of Minnesota. It will not be available until approximately January 2025. In that legislation, it did allow cities to, permit cities to pass moratoriums, which would include a study of how it would look and where it would look and what rules should it look like in the city, where if a moratorium is done and a study is, is approved, that's what we would be looking at. So the Office of Cannabis Management is expected to develop model ordinances that we will use at that time. But this was discussed at the August 22 workshop and posted on February, September 1 was a draft ordinance calling for a moratorium on sales essentially in the city of Oakdale for cannabis and, and opening new businesses in the city of Oakdale until 2025 or until the Office of the State Cannabis Office is open. So therefore, what's before you tonight, you're going to do a public hearing and after that, consideration of the motion to adopt the ordinance and approve of the moratorium. So that's what's before you. Thank you.
Councilmembers, any questions for staff right out of the gate? I actually have one. So we've done interim moratoriums in the past for planning and zoning related items, but I remember all of those were capped at 12 months. They could not exceed one year. I assume this was a special exemption written into the cannabis law, I'm looking at Jim Thompson, that just says it can extend past the 12 months that they use for planning and zoning? Jim.
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, I believe that is the case.
Or, or did they specify a specific date that our moratorium could extend until?
Well, I know the moratorium cannot extend beyond the time that the state does adopt the regulations, and the moratorium does apply to time, place, and manner, which is slightly different than zoning. So I'm confident that the way this was drafted is appropriate under the state law, but for whatever reason we're not, we'll, we'll come back to you, but I'm, I'm confident it was drafted appropriately.
Works for me. Okay, councilmembers, any questions before we open up the public hearing? Okay, so at this time, we're going to go ahead and open up the public hearing, same as before. Anybody that would like to speak on this item, please feel free to step up to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Try and keep comments, three minutes or so, that, that tends to be our tradition, but please feel free. Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back up for council consideration. Councilmembers, there's two action items here, so we will take those separately since they'd have different vote requirement thresholds. Are, final comments? Anything? All right, I'll look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to waive reading and adopt ordinance number 905, adopting an interim ordinance authorizing a study and imposing a moratorium on the operation of cannabis businesses within the city of Oakdale.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, final comments. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and that interim ordinance is approved. Next up, we have-
Mr. Mayor, I did find the provision, and it, it does allow the city to adopt the ordinance until January 2025, so that is in the statute.
Thanks, Jim. One more action item under this topic, authorizing publication of the ordinance by title and summary. Can I get a motion?
Make a motion to waive reading and adopt resolution 2023-88, authorizing publication of ordinance number 905 by title and summary.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Duck it.
Motion and a second, final comments. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and that resolution is adopted as well. Next up on our agenda, we have open forum. This is an opportunity for any members of the public to share with us whatever's on their mind. Before we get to that, I have a few proclamations to read. First up is recognizing direct, direct support professional appreciation week. Direct support professionals are members of a critical workforce in the disability services world. And so the proclamation reads, "Whereas direct support professionals, or DSPs, are the primary providers of community-based, long-term support services for tens of thousands of individuals with disabilities in Minnesota. And whereas DSPs are valued for their work in building respectful and trustful relationships with individuals to assist them with their most intimate needs. And whereas DSPs provide essential support to individuals with disabilities to stay connected to family, friends, coworkers, and the community by helping, helping them to define and live a quality life. And whereas DSPs provide a broad range of individual supports, including meal prep, medication assistance, personal care, and life skills trainings, mobility, work and life enrichment opportunities, and other daily tasks. And whereas DSPs support informed choices and person-centered practices that honor and respect individuals with disabilities they serve. And whereas during the COVID-19 pandemic, DSPs played an instrumental role in ensuring the safety and maintaining dedicated support and care for those that they serve. And whereas an adequate workforce of high-quality DSPs is necessary for the people of Minnesota to respond to the needs of people with disabilities and minimize more costly settings such as hospitals and institutions. And whereas DSPs are one of the fastest-growing positions in Minnesota and demand for their skills is great, yet low wages and demographic trends are creating a growing shortage of DSPs, leading to increased turnover. And whereas public officials are key advocates in building awareness and addressing issues facing this publicly funded workforce. Therefore, I, Kevin Zabel, Mayor of Oakdale, Minnesota, do hereby proclaim September 10 through the 16th as Direct Support Professionals Recognition Week in the city of Oakdale." We have one more proclamation, recognizing Constitution Day and Week. Whereas September 17, 2023 marks the 236th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary. And whereas public law 915 authorizes the President of the United States to designate September 17 through the 23rd as Constitution Week each year. Therefore, I, Kevin Zabel, Mayor of Oakdale, Minnesota, do hereby proclaim September 17 through the 23rd as Constitution Week and September 17 as Constitution Day in the city Let's circle back up to open forum. This is an opportunity for anybody in the public to share what is ever on their mind. House rules ask that people try and keep their comments to three minutes or so. So please feel free to step on up. That's you, Les.
Okay. Well, I didn't find out about this ordinance change for the chickens, so I really didn't have a lot of time to prepare, but I did my best. I have one, I, no, I'd forget if I didn't write it, so I'm going to read this. My reason for being here is to ask to have Amendment 906 vote postponed for a month or more to resolve issues with the amendment. Some proposed changes are not practical and some issues are not addressed sufficiently. I was on the Oakdale Planning Commission for 13 years, along with Mayor Zabel, who was just starting, as I was just finishing. I was chairman of the Oakdale Ordinance Committee for seven years. During that time, I rewrote many of the city's ordinances. The chicken ordinance didn't need any changes. It was simple and basic, and it worked well for decades. I have also helped many Minnesota cities write their chicken ordinances. I teach classes at the Oakdale Discovery Center about keeping chickens safe and comfortable in frigid climates. I stress code compliance and how to keep neighbors happy with roosters, et cetera. I'm an administrator of an internet group with 100,000 members. There are hundreds of chicken groups. One has 637,000 members. Nobody's coop from Canada to Texas would be, would meet the proposed 906 ordinance. Hardly a coop in the whole nation could meet what is being proposed. For one, the temperature of 32 to 85 nationwide, everybody's coop goes above 85 degrees. I would venture to guess there's not a one in the whole nation. So that can't stand the way it is. In Texas, for instance, I keep getting information through these groups about peoples, how they're doing with the heat and all that. Almost all of them say no problem whatsoever. Chickens can handle 100 degrees or more, just like humans. Chickens have a body temperature of 107 degrees already, you know? Cold weather, about 50% of the coops in the state, including northern Minnesota, are not heated at all, zero. And most coops are rarely heated above zero. You know, this requires 32 degrees. Nobody does it. 25% of the coops have no electricity, which means no heat. My chickens choose to sleep at minus 20 degrees in the unheated aviary. That's, they do it on purpose. But below that temperature, then they will go into the warmer coop. I can't get them in there. If I put them in there, they come right back out again, even at 20 below. Window requirements. My coop is insulated and well-ventilated with 50% humidity, but my coop has no windows on purpose. I believe the intent of that paragraph was for ventilation not to have a window, you know? I just don't have one. I have other ways to provide ventilation. In the change, there's no mention of humidity. That's pretty important. It should be less than 80%, but above that, they start to get respiratory diseases. Less than 60% is ideal. A 2-inch muffin fan is sufficient for ventilation and keeping humidity at 50%, just like a house. If there's no electricity available, a 1.5-inch PVC pipe venting up and outside works just about the same. No window necessary. And also, that creates a negative pressure which keeps frost from forming around the doors and openings. One guy, just read, one guy couldn't get into his coop for three days because the doors were frozen shut. He didn't have proper ventilation. Another one is coop size and the chicken run size. Well, for one thing, the ordinance divides it into coops, runs, and exercise yards, three stages, and that's what I do with mine. There's no provision for, in the size of these categories, there's no provisions for chickens of different sizes or breeds. Some chickens are 20 ounces, not much bigger than a robin, and others are 20 pounds, you know, stand four feet tall. And you can probably only get two chickens of the larger breed in the amount of space required by the amendment. So it has to be flexible, depending on what you got. And also, if you, your coop is too big, the chickens will freeze. Their body heat keeps it warm, so smaller means warmer. For cold weather, chickens produce three BTUs per pound, so six average chickens produce about 100 BTUs. And that's barely enough to heat a small coop, insulated, draft-free coop, but it will not heat a large coop. So the specs that are required are too large. It'll be hard to keep them warm. Chickens don't live in their coop, so it's really not important, the space requirement in the coop. They live in a 12-by-12 nest, you know? And a lot of times, three chickens will crowd into one of them. So, you know, I forget what the proposal says, 10 feet or whatever it was. They don't need that much in the coop. They might need it in the aviary, or the run, or their yard, but not in the coop. But this specifies they need it. Roosters. There's no need to restrict roosters. Section 148D in the current ordinance will handle that, as far as nuisance, noise, and whatever. If a rooster makes noise, that ordinance applies, not, not the chicken ordinance. Some roosters are nearly silent, like hens. Like, I've had a couple of them that, the hens make more noise. So it depends on the rooster, you know? Some are, I, I had to rehome a few that I had because they were noisy. I didn't want anybody to be disturbed, so, you know, I decided they were too noisy for other people. But most of them, I shouldn't say most, but it's not impossible at all to get a rooster that is quiet. So I hate to see them eliminated. Also, roosters are the guardians over the hens. They will fearlessly produce, protect their hens from death by predators, including hawks, fox, hawks, fox, possums, raccoons, dogs, and cats. The rooster will protect them. He'll kill them if, and some, if it gets bad enough. There are methods to keep rooster sounds from being a problem. I'd keep mine in, in their insulated coop until 8:00 in the morning, and then I'd let them out, and then, then the noise ordinance takes over. So you really don't need a chicken ordinance to monitor their noise either. The noise ordinance will take care of that.
Les, I do have to enforce the time restriction on open forum, so if you have one final thought-
I got, one more final thought.
All right.
Dogs make more noise than a disturbance than roosters, usually. Chickens and pigeons should not be subject to the same set of rules. They have very different needs. Pigeons are comfortable at minus 40 degrees outside, a chicken isn't, and they are comfortable at 110 degrees, which is uncomfortable for a chicken. And pigeons make no noise, so the chicken ordinance really doesn't apply. It's another whole discussion. So, oh, there is a Twin Cities Chicken Tour coming up for about a week, I think, where all over the Twin Cities, you can go tour a chicken coop and see what they really are like, and what they really need, and what they don't need. Google Twin Cities Chicken Coop Tour, you can go. Thank you.
Thank you, Les.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak under open forum? All right, we're going to keep going.
Could I, one more thing?
Yes.
I'd be perfectly happy to help if there wanted to be more discussion on the approval of this ordinance, or not approval of the ordinance. I've done this all around the Twin Cities and other cities, too.
Thank you, Les. Moving on to consensus motions, we got a bunch tonight. A through O. City Administrator texted me and wanted me to call out one specific one.
The police officer one has been added to consensus.
Got it.
And that will be uploaded on the, online.
Would that change?
If you approve consensus, that one will be on there.
Which one is it on here?
It's a new one I handed out, new consensus motion. It would end up being P, like in Paul.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
Oh, okay.
That makes sense.
Those A through P?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, A through P tonight. Councilmembers, are there any individual ones that you would like to pull for individual consideration?
I'd like to pull H and J.
H and J. Okay. On those two, just a heads up, since there's two action items, we would take those separate, like we did on the public hearing. Councilmembers, any other ones? Nope. Okay, so can I get a motion for A through G, aye, and K through P?
I will make a motion to approve consensus motions A through G, aye, and K through P.
All right, there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, final comments. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and that laundry list of them are approved. Let's circle back to H. Councilmember Willenbring, you polled it. Would you like to give us a quick summary and share your thoughts?
So the reason I polled it, couple of questions, and I think maybe the chief can answer. As far as the residents, if we were to approve this ordinance, how would that affect the current residents and the number of chickens or birds that they have?
Chief Newton, would you like to join us? Come on down.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmembers, can you repeat the last piece of that?
So if we approve the ordinance, how would it affect the current numbers that certain people have, like, that are approved over six, is really what I'm getting at, is what happens to those coops and those birds if we approve the ordinance?
Sure, we would give them a grace period to, one, let them know the change of the ordinance, and give them time to come in compliance. So it's not anything the police department go out and force change immediately. We would just influence them to follow the ordinance.
To that point, Chief, can you remind us the animal, or the, I almost say animal license because they're not, well, maybe a pet license, too. Is that an annual process, the renewal process? So I mean, would it, would it happen then, you know, when the individual comes in and applies for a renewed license? Would that be a natural point where the police department would say, no, you know, the ordinance changed, now you have to come into compliance? Or would you go through existing animal permits and proactively connect with those individuals?
Yes, to answer your question, Mayor, it is an annual process, and what we do in this case is have our staff reach out to those who received permits this year and reach out to them proactively to let them know about the change, and let them know that we'll give them a grace period to come in compliance, and eventually we'll, we'll follow up with them on that.
Okay, thank you. Councilmembers, any questions or final comments on this item?
One other question.
That's from Willenbring.
Related to the sizing and the heating of the coops. Do we know where that information came from? Where do we gather that information?
Councilmember Willenbring, Mayor Council, that came from those, all those sample ordinances, I think we had like 14 of them, from surrounding cities, and our assistant city attorney took the compilation of those and, and used them in the draft ordinance. So they're from the other cities.
Okay.
Do you know anything further, Chief?
No, that's, that's right.
As far as this ordinance goes, I'll just say that I, I will be voting no, because I am against allowing slaughtering for private residents. I know we don't allow it for commercial, but I'm also against it for private.
Councilmembers, final comments? I'll look for a motion.
Make a motion to approve consensus item H.
We're just going, we're going to break that into two items since they have different vote thresholds now, so just that top one.
H part, consensus most, I, I make a motion to approve consensus motion H, part one.
All right, so that is the ordinance text itself. There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, final comments. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
And that ordinance is, ordinance change is adopted four to one. Next, we'll take the question about publication, title, and summary. Can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve consensus motion H, part two, as presented.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Duck it.
Motion and a second, final comments. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
And that is approved four to one as well. Next, we have J, right? J? Yes. Oh, I screwed up. Okay, I'm going to start, well, shoot, I was going to pull I.
Could he do a motion to reconsider?
Yes.
We'll do that after, we'll clear J, and then come back to that one, because I think there's something we got to talk about. Okay, I'm sorry. Councilmember Willenbring, would you like to summarize J for us?
J is related to the smoking of cannabis and hemp in a public place. So there's a few things I want to ask, or actually require, or not require, but request. So in Section 3A, we have any indoor or outdoor areas that is used or held out for use by public, whether owned or operated, by public or private interests. I'm, I'm going to ask one time if we could change that to state any indoor or outdoor property owned, leased, or controlled by a government unit, including the city, and to exclude private property, because private property has rights. And I feel like this is a bit of an overreach, telling private property, commercial and retail owners, what they can and can't do on their property. That's part of it, but if you want to stop there, that's fine.
Let me, let me ask you a process question, how you'd like to handle this. We can make the motion in the second, as written, and then you can offer that as an amendment, if you'd like to present each one and then get a vote on it, and then we'll see what moves into the final version. If you want to go one at a time and get a vote on each one of your proposals, that'd probably be the most expedient way, or the most streamlined way.
I don't get what you mean.
So we would ju, we would- So we would ju, we would make the motion in the second as this, as our baseline ordinance, and then you could offer those as amendments or changes. And then we would vote on those individually. If they pass, then that would be adopted, and then we would still vote on the amended language. It's, I think it's just an easier way to track.
Correct.
Whether it's passing or failing, or if we're making changes.
Okay.
But you, you'd get a vote on all of, you'd get a group vote on all of those. Does that make sense?
I think.
Yeah. I promise it'll be okay.
We'll help you along the way, don't we?
Okay, so council members, let's get a motion and a second on J, the first part, and then we'll work through the amendments.
So I'd like to move to approve consensus motion J.
Part one.
Part one.
As presented.
As presented.
All right, there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Conversation. Yeah.
Okay, so I wasn't done.
Yep, but I think let's just take one at a time. Or if you wanna present them all as a package, we could do that, too. It's totally up to you.
So I guess, what is the language then? I would like to propose an amendment.
Correct.
To consensus motion J.
Yep.
To change the wording from 3A to "any indoor or outdoor property owned, leased, or controlled by a government unit, including the city," versus what it currently states.
Sorry, I need my laptop.
I actually have a question regarding that, Susie. Hey, Jim, wouldn't the indoor piece of that be covered under the Minnesota Clean, Clean Air Act? Where you can't smoke indoors?
I, I don't think the Clean Air Act covers, it covers smoking. I don't think it covers what we're talking about in this ordinance.
But wouldn't, wouldn't smoking marijuana be covered? Would, or don't we know at this point?
I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Okay, interesting.
Yeah.
A point of clarification, Councilmember Willenbring. Are you talking about, you're not talking about homes necessarily, also homes, but you're talking about private property businesses?
Yes.
You want it, those excluded?
Yes. So the only ones that we're banning use on is property owned by the city, essentially.
Sorry, I'm trying to grab the language so I can look at it. To that comment, you know, for me, this goes back to a request I received from a member of the business community. It, the proposed language, in my opinion, gives clarity that we're treating smoke derived from cannabis or low potency hemp, same as any other nuisance subject to public accommodation laws. For me, that's why I support it, including that in there. I absolutely support a business's right to decide, you know, how to run their business, but there's always going to be elements that are subject to public accommodation laws. You know, whether it's discrimination of serving patrons, or allowing people in your building, or whatever it might be, there are times when government has a compelling interest to insert themselves into that, in my opinion. Sorry, I'm trying to buy time while I pull this up. So you said it was 3A?
Do it, do it.
3A, yep.
Do you mind if I throw a comment? Yeah, and Susie, I, I'm fine with, like, any, any oral way of consuming cannabis other than smoking in a, inside. But I, I don't support being allowed to smoke it. Like, any other, any other form of consumption, I'm fine with.
We're just talking about private versus public.
Yeah, yeah, but, but, yeah, but if, but if somebody wants to eat a, like, if, if, the way I see it, or understand it, you couldn't, you couldn't, you couldn't go to a restaurant in Oakdale and consume a gummy under the way it's written now. Would that be accurate?
I don't think it is.
No, I don't think that.
No, Mr. Mayor, council, this is about smoking.
It's just about smoking.
Although there is a question.
That's number two, you're right.
Just about smoking, okay. If it's just about smoking, I, I understand.
For purposes of what she's proposing right now, yes.
Gotcha, okay.
So are we still having discussion then about this item, then, is that?
Can I just add something real quick?
Yes.
So when we went over our BRIA report, one of the things that was mentioned in the BRIA report was a common sense approach to government. And most businesses, especially small, don't want more government, they want less government involved. I'm just gonna put that out there.
Councilmember Her, sorry. I, you wanted to say.
Oh, no, I, I just wanted to ask if we were still in conversation.
Yeah, so let, um, let me try and summarize this, if I get anything wrong, correct me. So Councilmember Willenbring moves to amend consensus item J, striking 3A, and replacing it with?
Any indoor or outdoor property owned, leased, or controlled by a government unit, including the city.
Okay. There's a motion to amend, is there a second? Motion fails due to lack of a second. Second item?
Okay, second item is B1. The wording, "No person shall vaporize or smoke cannabis flower, cannabis products, or lower, lower potency hemp edibles. I don't know how you can smoke an edible." So that's the wording that I think we need to fix.
So, Mr. Mayor, City Council, thank you. I asked the city attorney, I didn't give much time today to talk about this, but, but I do concur from my layman's reading that that word "edible" shouldn't be in there. Jim?
Yes, Mayor, that was put in when we were considering a broader language. Some cities leave it in, some cities take it out, but, but Councilmember Willenbring, "Low potency hemp edibles are only consumed, they're not consumed by smoking." So if the preference is to take them out, take, that would, that would be the language to remove. Lower potency hemp edibles, the phrase hemp-derived consumer products, those can be smoked. So it's just the edibles language that would be appropriate to take, remove from the ordinance.
Couldn't you say a lower potency hemp edible is a hemp-derived consumer product? I mean, that's a broader term, a consumer product, I mean.
But there are two different definitions in the state law.
Oh, there's the answer. So, Councilmember Willenbring moves to amend consensus item J, item B1, to strike the words "lower potency hemp edibles," comma, from B1, correct?
Correct.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Have we voted on the first part, though?
These are amendments.
Yeah, these are amendments, yeah. We'll get back to the underlying.
Okay, gotcha, gotcha, okay.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Yep, final comments? I would support that, yeah. Final comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right, B1 is adopted. Final?
Last but not least, B, or excuse me, Section C. I would like, if I could ask chief a question, related to the petty misdemeanor part of it.
Yes.
Hi.
Aye.
Could you? Sorry.
Thanks for coming to the fines den.
I just want you to explain petty misdemeanor and what fines are associated with petty misdemeanor. And does it go up the more you have?
Yes, so petty misdemeanor would just be a payable offense. It would be something that someone would be taken into custody for. Essentially, you'd be issued a citation, just like you would on a traffic stop. Obviously, the higher level is a misdemeanor-level crime, which is different, because that can be an arrestable offense, or it can be a payable fine. And of course, as you go higher, it'd be for higher-level crimes, gross misdemeanors, and felonies. So the petty misdemeanor is the lowest-level offense that there is.
So there's no criminal, criminal record associated with it, correct?
Correct.
What about, how much, how much do we charge for a petty misdemeanor? There's a fee associated with that, right?
Yeah, I don't think we've established the, the fee on that. And those can range anywhere from twenty-five dollars to, up towards five hundred dollars.
Mr. Thompson?
Just a supplement, and I might be wrong about this, but I think the state, the state law violation for a petty misdemeanor, I think the state cap is at three hundred dollars for a petty misdemeanor under state law, I think, I think that's right.
So that would comply?
But that, the bottom line is, it's only a monetary fine, that's the maximum penalty that can be imposed. There can't be a, any sort of criminal sentence, and it's not considered a crime any purpose. It's, it's equivalent of a traffic ticket, that's the best way to think about it.
And the city can set their own fee?
They can set their own fee.
Or does it have to be the state?
I think we could set our own fee, but I don't think we could exceed, for this particular one, we might not be able to exceed the statutory cap, but I could work with the chief on that if we need to.
The other part of that is, the whole point of this legislation, my understanding, is to reduce the impacts, the disparate impacts on lower-income folks. But charging them a misdemeanor fee every time there's a citation, that's not helping the situation. Okay, that's not what the intent of the law is. Also, the intent of the law is to reduce the amount of interactions between police officers and the offending individuals, not to increase more, you know, interactions. It was to reduce it. So I don't know how to fix that, I can't vote for a petty misdemeanor at this point, unless we talk about really low fees or no fees. Because I think it subverts the whole point of the legislation.
I'm gonna look to City Administrator Volkers. I don't think petty misdemeanor amounts are council action, or are they in the fee schedule?
So thank you for asking, Mr. Mayor, City Council. I didn't know the city could, we could create our own petty misdemeanor fine, that's news to me. I thought they were subject to the state fine schedule, so that would be news to me. If you could do that, regardless, there will be state fees. That will, you will not be able to waive the state fees that go along with the petty misdemeanor payable. So there will be an amount, no matter what. And the fees are mandated by the state, so however you do this, I don't even know if you have the authority to set your own fine, but it, there's a state fine schedule and fee schedule that's mandated, actually, the fee schedule, so.
Mr. Mayor, this is probably something we would need to follow up with the city prosecutor on. But the one distinction I'm making is, is if there's a violation of a state law, and the state law says it's a petty misdemeanor, can't change that, okay? If we're talking about a violation of a city code provision, which this would be, and you wanted a less than the fine, it's possible you could do that, but I would wanna have the prosecutor, prosecutor weigh in on that. But right now, this current ordinance for you doesn't establish the fine per se, it's just said it's a petty misdemeanor.
Got it. Councilmember Willenbring, did you have a proposed change there, or was it just a comment about that provision?
Just a comment, I don't know what the change would be. I know some cities are, are not even doing petty misdemeanors. They're just, if, if you, you get a call, if a police officer gets a call, they go out, they say, hey, could you stop doing this, and they walk away. There's no citation. It's just on your own.
More diversion.
Yeah, yeah. That's, that would be my suggestion, but.
So council members back, let's zoom back up. We have consensus item J, part one, as amended. Are there any other amendments? All right, final comments? All right, just so we're clear, so it's as amended. There's been a motion, there's been a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
No.
All right, that passes four one, as amended. And then we have the item about title and summary. Can I get a motion for that?
I'd like to move that the city council, or, I would like to move to approve consensus motion J, part two, as presented.
All right, there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, final comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
No.
And that passes four one as well. Councilmembers, I need to go back up and make a motion to reconsider consensus motion I as presented. And then we'll explain why. Like, there's a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? And consensus motion I is back before the body. So consensus motion I is regarding THC products for those allowing liquor license holders to obtain a THC license. So one question I had for the city administrator was, as you all know, we were essentially going to apply the existing THC license holder language to liquor license holders as written. That was the consensus from the last workshop. In working through the language, or reviewing the language, I felt like there were some provisions that might not necessarily be feasible, given the layout and how liquor stores operate. And so my question for staff was, what's the best way to address this? You know, one requirement, for example, is state law requires edibles to be behind the counter. No such restriction or requirement exists for THC seltzers. Thinking about some liquor stores, you know, around our community, is that feasible to require THC seltzers to be held behind the counter? Some liquor stores don't even have the traditional counter in that sense, you know? So it's like, eh, you know, there may, there may be some better language to address some of those real-world situations. So, there's three ways we can do this. Chris is laughing. We can try and make changes on the fly, and carve out, possibly carve out exemptions for beverages, you know, distinguishing that from edibles. We could adopt it as presented, again. Or we can table it, take it to a workshop, and dig into some of the details, and try and get the language right. And I see Jim's finger out of the corner of my eye.
Yes, maybe I can help simplify it, okay. The provision that the mayor's talking about is in another section of the city code that says you need to keep these behind, behind the counter. And there's two other provisions that deal with that. So if the consensus of the council is to change that for liquor stores, so they don't have to do that, we would, we would come back to you with a different ordinance, amending that section of the city code. It wouldn't stop you from enacting this one, because this one just allows liquor stores. So we come back presumably at the next council meeting with, if the council gives us that direction, to change that provision in the code, so that liquor stores, you know, would not have to sell these only, quote, "behind the counter."
Thank you for that. So, yeah, so Jim was spot on. I mean, we can approve this, and liquor stores could sell it, complying with the restrictive language in the city code. I don't think they'd be able to comply anyways. You know, selling behind the counter, et cetera, has to be locked up. That's one of the requirements in the current code. So my suggestion is, we take this to a workshop, make sure we get the language, how we feel comfortable about it, make sure we're changing all of the different spots, and then we adopt it later. Did everybody follow all that? I'm, I'm trying to say, I'd like us to get it right before we tell liquor stores, they probably can't be compliant anyways.
From a practicality standpoint, what the mayor's, what I heard anyway, is we can pass this ordinance, but they're not gonna have, have the infrastructure in place within their stores to adhere to this anyways, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah. And so the mayor then is requesting that we table it. I would be in support of that.
I would, too.
But didn't Jim just say that it's a different part of a different ordinance? That we need to amend?
It's the same ordinance, but it's a different paragraph. So there's the, there's the passage that says you can't sell THC's if you have a liquor license. Okay, so that's what we're changing. But there's another provision that says, okay, low potency hemp, or whatever it is, has to have it behind the counter, or you can't be accessible to the consumer, that's the issue. Like, what I'm saying is liquor stores couldn't satisfy that part if we allowed them to sell.
Some could.
Uh, some could, yeah, some, some could. I think it would create an enforcement issue for the police department, because then they'd have to go around and do compliance checks to make sure that those that could are, and those that can't aren't selling. And so I would rather just get it right, right off the bat. I may also want to have a conversation about the distance, since we're changing. Don't look at them, I think they're gonna hit me.
Point of order, Mayor, can I make a comment?
Yeah.
So currently, there is no ordinance allowing the sale of these products, like THC seltzers in the city of Oakdale, is that correct?
Currently, the ordinance explicitly prohibits it.
Okay, and as a resident here, I do know there's a number of liquor stores that have it. I would rather pass this, because we have consensus saying that we are willing, as a group, to allow these products to be sold, and then come back and deal with some of the nuances and details of the ordinance, so we can at least make expressly clear to the business owners that it is okay to do that type of business in the city. So that would be my preference.
So also, to be clear, it's not. They, they can't sell those until they get a council-approved THC license. So even if we adopt this, they're not gonna be able to sell tomorrow until they come and get a license from the city. So, please send those names to the police chief, so.
Well, but to be fair, right?
Please don't.
Delaying, delaying this two weeks, right? I understand the importance of getting it right, but there's multiple things that need to be addressed here, and I would rather get to that point sooner, for the sake of the businesses of Oakdale, and then come back and look at the rest of the ordinance. That's just my preference.
Well, but, I, I mean, I do, I do wanna stress, they're not gonna be able to sell it for at least two two weeks anyways, because they don't have a THC license. So, so I mean, it's at least two weeks anyways until they can sell, which we know our department's doing compliance checks constantly anyways. So I, I feel like that makes your point moot. They can't, they can't sell it anyways, at least until they get a license.
My point is, I don't want these business owners to find themselves in a situation where if, God forbid, one of them looks at the code next two weeks after we pass it and says, okay, this is what I need, and then we go back and make a bunch of changes, and then they're, and then they, after they've spent money to, to try and adhere to our, you see what I'm, you see where I'm going with that?
I get your argument.
That's a, that's the big problem there, I think.
City Administrator Volkers, I saw, were you gonna say something?
I was gonna say just two things. You hit the nail on the head on one. It will take, the argument goes both ways, of course, that if you pass this, it's still gonna take us time to do a license, so at least you're sending the message. But your point is they can't do it anyway for two weeks. I get it. It goes both ways, so. We can ease, the liquor stores are asking, okay? They, they just, and, and this was gonna go out, I know this is not a reason, I'm just telling you, it was gonna go out in the newsletter tomorrow, the quarterly newsletter to all residents in Oakdale, residents in Oakdale and businesses, that you guys are pastes, because that's what we discussed at workshop, so that's, was gonna go out and we're gonna have to change the whole publication. It's not a reason not to do it, but.
Okay, whole publication, it's a paragraph.
No, it is, no, it's, it's a third of a page on one of the pages, so we have to find a filler or redo, we have to redo it.
You always gonna say put a picture of the council.
Oh, sure. Okay, let me do that.
Well, I mean, is really the, the primary concern, the placement of where these are kept in the liquor store? If that's the primary concern, I'm happy to offer an amendment right now.
My concern is just being in compliance with the ordinance as written, that I don't necessarily feel is feasible for liquor stores. We can change it on the fly. Chris and I played around with some language that might be doable, you know, just carving out beverages. But I mean, then there are the other requirements. I mean, it's just it had to be behind the counter, you know? The hard part is that distinguishing between low potency hemp edibles, hemp-derived consumer products, where does it fit in? I'm good with whatever. Personally, I think it would be easier for us to get everything settled and then reach out to liquor license holders and say, if you want to sell these, you need a license, here are the new requirements under the city code, come talk to us. And this is our timeframe versus changing requirements or restrictions within a business later.
So I would be in support of that, as long as we didn't touch the distance item that you had brought up. I think, you know, in the spirit of keeping it fixated on just that language, I would be supportive of that. But if we were gonna go rehash this whole thing, I would not be in support of that.
And that's just a wild idea if we wanted to open that door later.
So could you read, if you, since you have it up?
Yeah.
What exactly you're trying to amend or change?
So what I, well, what I'm trying to do is just say, let's send this to workshop so we get the language correct. The issue within the existing ordinance?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. This is chapter?
Nine. Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you had it up already, Kevin.
No, that was the other one. But I can pull it up here, so.
Mayor Zabala, while you looked that up, may I just kind of open up another point of conversation? Is this something that we can have the city attorney look at some language to possibly propose to us tonight on the fly? Jim, would, would that be something that you could do?
Mr. Mayor, Mayor of the Council, I probably could do it. My concern would be is you'd need to post ordinances 10 days ahead on your website, and this does, this doesn't.
We already did that based on the last.
Yeah, and this doesn't address that topic. And now that's not fatal, you can still adopt ordinances. My preference would be, I don't think we'd want to change this on the fly, because I want to make sure, because we're not changing this section in the code, we're changing another section in the code, and that section isn't even covered by this ordinance.
So Jim, you're, you're recommending we table it?
I think either way works. I think you can adopt it and then direct.
So either adopt it as is or?
Adopt it as is, address the second issue next.
Okay.
Or table it. It, either way works, to what the council's preference is.
To Susie's point, sections were, so there's the, the section that explicitly excludes liquor license holders from selling hemp-derived products. So that's, that's what this would do away with. We would no longer have that. The other issue is section nine dash one seven seven prohibits THC seltzers from being sold other than quote behind the counter. Did that just turn on? And so that, that was the conflict. Like, that is a requirement that applies to all low potency hemp products that are allowed, i.e. edibles. What I'm saying is that probably doesn't, that's probably not feasible for beverages, because they're bigger, they take up more space. So liquor light, or liquor stores, some couldn't satisfy that requirement.
I don't see why we couldn't just amend that last little part. On the fly, on the fly.
We could. And I would be open to that, Susie, but, you know, Jim's comments just a minute ago, I mean, it's.
You know, what, what I would like to do is, you know, the city attorney has made it clear that it's okay, we do approve now, and so I think I would be okay with supporting a, a motion to approve as is. You know, regardless, we're gonna eat up time. And so we'll take care of this one now, and then we'll come back at a later time to fix the, the one with the problem. And then, you know, you're right, I think the mayor made a great point that even approving it now, no one would be able to get a license, which is fine, but at least we're making progress in the right direction, and then we'll fix that other section of the code. I, I feel that seems reasonable to me.
Yeah, and I, I could live with that. I don't, I don't think it's the best solution, but I think I can live with that.
Personally, I just feel for the businesses that could get caught in enforcement in the next two weeks. I mean, they're not in compliance, you know? So an officer could walk in there and write them a citation, because they're not in compliance. On a product we said they could sell, but oh, not yet.
You know, my, Mr. Mayor, my, my hope is that we have law-abiding businesses out there, but I think we all know the reality of, of the world that we live in. And with the anticipation of us making a move after this to correct that minor issue, I think, you know, it's, our intent is there already, and, you know, I would ask that all businesses comply, but I think it's something that, you know, if we're moving in that direction, you know, you know, I would, I would want to make sure that we, we show and give faith that we are supportive of their, of them welcoming them in this side of the business.
Yep, I'd agree with Councilmember her.
Alrighty. So it sounds like enough people want to just move it as is and we fix the issues later?
Can we make sure that comes to council, Chris?
Absolutely. Well, we'll get a draft ordinance posted here with that language. I'll send it out to you before we do anything, but we want to meet the 10-day deadline so we can get it on the next agenda, fix it.
And then anybody selling, they gotta wait.
Yeah, well, we wouldn't have the licensing part anyway, you're right about that. We, we don't even have the fee established for it, so.
Oh.
Yeah.
It'd be the same, though, right?
If you want it the same, that makes it easier, yes. We can update the, but we still have to update the fee schedule to allow for it.
Oh, boy. There's a lot of work that has to be done yet. All right. Who wants to make a motion to approve consensus motion I as presented again?
I would like to make a motion to approve consensus motion I as presented.
Do we want to go part one of that again?
Yes.
Oh, I suppose, yeah.
In part one, with the revision of that other part of the ordinance to come later at a later workshop.
Yeah, that's required anyways.
Okay, cool.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion, a second, final comments, please say no. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right, that one's done. Let's go to title and summary.
Make a motion to approve consensus motion I, part two, as presented.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion, a second, final comments, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right, back where we started. Sorry, everybody. Let's keep moving down to advisory boards and commissions, planning met. Councilmember Ingebertson.
Just the only, the only main item on that docket was a home, a home, home occupation permit for a dog grooming business. I have to admit, I thought that the two individuals that were here were very smart entrepreneurs, so. Nope. Planning Commission did recommend approval, and look forward to seeing that here.
No other advisory boards or commissions, staff reports, finance, adopting proposed 2024 property tax levy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kyle Stasak is our, he is helping out with this budget stuff now that our former finance director, who's in the background of the room.
Yeah, who's lurking, like.
We asked him to be here just in case. Thank you, Jason. Anyway, Kyle.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Kyle Stasak, accounting manager. So, city of Oakdale is required to adopt a proposed property tax levy for 2024 and certify it to Washington County Auditor by October 2nd this year. And with this, we are also required to set a date for the truth and taxation meeting. And in setting the proposed levy, council should consider the proposed levy can only be decreased prior to adoption of the final levy scheduled for December. Upon certification to Washington County, the proposed levy will be used to repair proposed property tax notice, also noted as the truth and taxation notice. The notice is required to be mailed to property owners between November 11th and the 24th each year, and it includes parcel-specific estimated property tax information. New for the 2023 proposed property tax levy, which, or notice, which was last year, was required supplemental budgetary information that was passed by state law. And for this year, they actually changed it and simplifying the requirements and only including the certified levy for taxes payable in the current year and the proposed levy for taxes payable in the following year, along with summ, summary budgeted revenue expenditure items for the taxes payable in the current year and the proposed following year. Following adoption of the proposed levy, and over the next couple months, if, after any council-directed changes, the current city budget calendar calls for Oakdale to consider adopting the final 2024 levy, along with the related budget capital improvement plan at the December 12th meeting. And then, just to kind of touch on the budget process so far, we started in about April this year. And, you know, just gathering the information, I just wanted to acknowledge the work, you know, department heads put in, management team. We've been working with them, you know, since these past five months on updates, prioritizing objectives. And then I also wanted to highlight a former finance director, Jason Zimmerman. He put a lot of work into not only this proposed levy, but also the, the related budget, the capital improvement plan, and Open Gov Transparency Portal, which kind of wraps them all together. He takes quite a bit of pride in his work, and it shows. So along with kind of the internal work we've been doing the past five months, there have been five public work sessions since the spring, including May 23rd, June 27th, July 25th, August 8th, and August 29th. Currently, the proposed 2024 property tax levy for the city is $18,227,988, which is up 13% from 2023. And just to break down the components of this, the operating portion, the general fund, makes up $14,399,100. The capital improvement plan portion is $1,690,000, which that's the vehicle and equipment plan or fund, street improvement fund, park improvement, and municipal building funds. And the last component is the debt piece, and that is proposed $2,138,888. So with this, the median residential property in Oakdale for 2024 was valued by Washington County at 300, about $343,000, which is an increase of almost 9% since their last valuation. It is estimated with this proposed tax levy, the city's share of their property tax would increase about 10%. Some assumptions and factors impacting the proposed levy and related budget. There are five new regular full-time employees in the proposed levy, three licensed officers in the police department, one public works maintenance worker, and an assistant city administrator in the admin department. There's internal pre-funding for the vehicle and equipment plant or fund, funding to promote strategic development and redevelopment, software improvements to modernize resident reporting of non-emergency community issues, work order processing, the city code book, along with employee performance management. Additional services to ensure public safety policies are consistent with legislation, case law, changes in best practice, and Minnesota post requirements. There's increased workers' compensation premiums due to modifications and rate changes. Along with that, there's contingencies for medical, dental, life, and disability insurances. And it, the proposed levy factors in the assumptions for the proposed grade and step and cost of living adjustments in accordance with the city's class and compensation program. Staff believes that the proposed levy accomplishes a number of important objectives, including focusing on essential city services, maintaining appropriate fund balance, proactively funding equipment repair and replacement. It reduces the debt levy for the fourth consecutive year and to the lowest amount since 2017. It's responsible management of significant inflationary pressures for personnel and commodities. It ensures best fire safety services through a city-operated, full-time, career-model fire department with 24/7 coverage. Only 2.8% of all registered fire departments in the state of Minnesota meet this standard. It accomplishes maintenance of the city properties, it ensures compensation to recruit and retain existing staff, and is responsible long-term planning and prioritization for city funding. City action, city council action requested that waive reading and adopt resolution 2023-84. And with that, I will stand for any questions.
All right, councilmembers, let's light them up. No, you did a great job, Kyle.
Kyle, you did a good job.
Take no prisoners. Councilmembers, any questions for Kyle, right off the bat?
You know, Mr. Mayor, no question, but really, just a comment, you know, this is my first budget season since being appointed, and, you know, this was not an easy decision to get to where we are here, and I, I just have a lot of respect for all the work that previous councils and the staff and everyone who's put forth their time and effort into doing this. So thank you so much, and, you know, I, this is a budget that I support, and, you know, I hope my fellow council members feel the same way, so.
Any comments down here? Well, I'll just add a few, you know? First, you know, Kyle ran through all the dates that we've worked on it, but that was, what, five, six meetings? Our staff have been working on this every single day since April. And to put together a $40 million budget to serve and support 28,000 residents and I don't even know how many businesses now, takes a very long time. And so a tremendous thank you to all of our staff, because we know this is not easy. We know that there are very real needs for every city, especially Oakdale, a growing city like Oakdale, and there's never enough resources to go around. So, you know, under City Administrator Volkers' leadership, all of our department heads, all of our staff, a, a big thank you. You know, and earlier today, I was kind of toying with. the idea whether I even wanted to call out the preliminary tax levy, but I'm going to, because it's 13.5%. And when our residents see that in their mailbox, it's going to be scary. And unfortunately, the one single line item we get on the property tax statement does not tell the story of what's happening in this city. You know, that number, without context, can be incredibly misleading, you know? For this city, for our current proposed budget, where it sits right now, you know, we're looking at essentially a breakeven on our tax capacity rate. We've talked as a group about what we can do to actually turn that tax capacity rate negative, have a decrease from where we were last year, which would be our second or third decrease in a row. For a city that is cutting the tax rate our residents pay, a lot of people wonder, well, how is the tax levy going up? And it's because we're booming. We are growing. We have growth in our existing tax base, we have new growth, or new tax base coming in. You know, in the state of the city, you know, we talked about $80 million in new tax base, in new construction in the last year alone. For existing tax base, it's $400 million, 10%. I mean, these are real numbers that, when we look at what's happening in our community, it makes sense, how we are able to cut the overall rate, but still bring in more money to support the needs of our city. And we know those needs are huge. Three new officers, three new officers this budget covers will go a long way for our public safety needs. We just finished the transition to the full-time fire department. That was not easy. We're adding more administrative help, more help in our parks, and we're actually accounting for inflationary budget pressures that everybody is facing. I mean, this budget is responsible, it is reasonable for where we're trying to be and grow as a city, and everybody, I'm sorry, should be damn proud of it. It's not easy, it is never easy to sit up here and raise taxes. But we have needs in this community, and this budget does it responsibly. So I want to say a tremendous thank you. You know, Kyle, you hit it right on the head. You know, when you see things like our fourth year in a row for reducing our city debt, that is hard financial decisions that our senior leadership team have made a reality. And it's positioning us for a stronger financial future. So when our residents see that number in their mailbox, talk to us. We, everybody up here can tell you exactly where every single dime of that budget is going, because we have gone through that budget line by line to make sure we are being good stewards of taxpayer dollars. And we're investing in this community. So, off my soapbox.
I second what you said.
Councilmembers, can I have a motion?
I would like to motion, make a motion to waive reading and adopt resolution 2023-84, adopting the proposed 2024 property tax levy and establishing the date for the truth and taxation meeting.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion, a second, final comments. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And it is adopted. Thank you, Kyle.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Herr.
If you don't mind, I have some things that I have to tend to. And so if it is okay that I excuse myself from this meeting, thank you guys so much for doing the work of the city, and I will look to see the updates on how this meeting ended in a minute. So thank you guys so much.
Hopefully it's not too much longer, but thanks, Noah.
Hope everything's okay, too, Noah.
I'm sorry.
You're good, you're good. Uh, let's check in with our city attorney, Mr. Thompson.
Mr. Mayor.
How you doing down there?
Nothing to report tonight, but happy to answer questions.
Uh, council members, any questions for Jim? All right, let's turn the other way. Ms. Volkers, we've chatted with you a few times already tonight. What else do you got for us?
Mr. Mayor, City Council, you've heard enough from me. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmembers, any questions for Chris? Uh, council presentations. Who wants to go first?
Nothing from me.
Nothing?
I have a whole lot of nothing.
Oh, I do have one thing.
Oh, too late, you passed.
This is just my yearly reminder to go get your skin cancer evaluations, please. It's important, and it can save a life.
Especially with the extra sun we've had this summer.
Yep.
Even more so important.
Absolutely. Well, and I had one as well. I just wanted to say thank you to Les, who came out and spoke to the council tonight, right? We've got a lot of knowledge here in the city, and Les is clearly knowledgeable about chickens and coops, and he's been involved in the city for a long time. So there's a lot that we take in from residents that inform how we make these policies. And when we pass a policy as a body, as a council, it doesn't mean it's set forever, right? If changes need to be made, and as a part of this process in the past, you understand changes get made time and again. So I would encourage Les to reach out to the city and look at what was passed, and help us change what needs to be changed. Because if we've got an allow, an allowance for chickens in the city to a certain number, an allowance for coops, we want to make sure that they make sense for people who follow the rules, right? So I would encourage Les to reach out and just say thank you again for coming, because I learned a lot just in the short amount of time that you had to speak tonight. So thank you.
I agree. I've known Les a long time. My start in city government got started, I think I was in that chair, Les was in this chair, on the Planning Commission. And you are a wealth of knowledge, and you, you know, like we all know, that ordinances are a constant evolution process. They're always changing, they're never set. So, you know, there's always room for improvement. So we rely on our residents to help make that, those improvements. I got a few. Tonight, we had our Touch a Truck event. It was a little dicey there, there was some rain this afternoon, we're not quite sure. But of course, the clouds parted and the sun came out, and it was a great event. So thank you to all of the residents who came out for that. We had more than 30 vehicles from Public Works, police, fire. Thank you to our partners at Washington County, Metro Transit, even the private sector. I saw a DLI out there. So thank you for, everybody for bringing out those big rigs, and, and thank you to our residents for coming out as well. This is kind of exciting. So tomorrow, the St. Paul Area Chamber is hosting a Leaders in Local Government Awards Ceremony. And the city of Oakdale is a finalist in two categories. So that's pretty cool stuff. The, in the first category, our Business Retention, Expansion and Attraction Program is named a finalist. We partnered with the Oakdale and St. Paul Chambers on that. So that's pretty cool. And then, in the Communications and Marketing category, our Oakdale Parks and Recreation is also a finalist. So I'll be there tomorrow. I think we have a bunch of staff going tomorrow. That's always a fun time. So good luck to Community Development and Recreations on those finalist awards. So, here's hoping they win. Join us for one of our more popular, most popular events this Saturday, Family Fun Flatables. It is hard to believe that's here already. But Saturday, September 16th, always a fun time, 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. out here in Walton Park. It's a free event with inflatables for the whole family to explore, including a bounce castle, obstacle course, and giant slide. There'll be kids DJing concessions are available for cash, cash purchase. Also, a big thank you to our sponsors for that event. You know, we always have a very good turnout from the business community, so thank you to them as well. Farmers Market will be in the City Hall parking lot, again, this Wednesday, 2:00 to 6:00 p.m. Oh, this is depressing. We only have five left before it's done for the season, and then we know what comes. But we have new products arriving each week. Apple's our recent addition. I think last week I saw some mums out there, so we are definitely into the fall produce in plants. So please stop on out. Farmers Market, 2:00 to 6:00 p.m. this Wednesday. Finally, voting for our 2023 Summer Photo Contest began today on the city's Facebook page. Six outstanding finalists were selected, and fans can vote for their favorite photo by selecting like on each photo from now until September 30th. Top three photos with the most likes will be named the winner. We've had some really cool ones each season for the last year or so. So thank you to the residents who submitted the photos for that contest, and go out and vote. Let's pay the bills. In front of us, we have a claims roster for August 23rd through September 12th. Councilmembers, can I get a motion?
Make a motion to approve the claims as presented.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion, a second, final comments. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Bills are paid. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
移到
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion, a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you and good night. Woo!
Chris.
That's the longest one we've had in a while.
Nice, nice.